Going to keep conversations down?
Thank you.
Excuse me, it's good to see everyone out here this evening. Welcome to the Thursday, March 3 meeting of the planning board. First item of business is to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from October 7, 2021, and February 3, 2022. Are there any questions or comments relative to the minutes?
No, sir.
I have none.
No question.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the October 2021 and January 20-
February.
February 22 minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item of business is to sign bills. We have one bill from Grave Engineering for Cypress Avenue subdivision, definitive sub- definitive plan review for $2,160. Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the expenditures read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's going around. Board member comments. Mr. Rowe?
No comments. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Mr. Odlakis?
No comments this month, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thomas?
No comments, sir.
The only comment I have is, again, thank you, everyone, for coming in this evening. It's maybe it's the first time we've had a meeting in Town Hall in a while, and as you can see, masks are somewhat recommended but not required, so I'm glad everyone's out to see us. The only request I have is if anyone is not signed in, if I could ask you to please sign in, that would be to the benefit of proper recording for the meeting today.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Comment, please.
Yes.
So, for anyone watching at home or here tonight, the Community Preservation Committee is holding a public forum, I'm going to pull up the date so I get it right, on Tuesday, March 22 at the library at 6:30 PM. So this is the Community Preservation Committee is holding a public forum. Everyone's invited in the public, of course, to give feedback and ideas for the committee for their prioritization plan, so I hope you can make it. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. Cahill.
Not at all.
Okay, our first item of business is a new public meeting for Wyman Farms' streetlighting. Request for de minimis change. Mr. Odlakis will be recusing himself. Is the applicant present?
What do you think? Alex Rikoff, representing Wyman Farms LLC. Sorry if I sit here?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we have an application in this evening for modification on the private driveway lighting for the 935 Main Street Wyman Farms project. If you look on the little pamphlet that I handed out for you guys, the original, which this is what is existing onsite right now, if you look here, this was the approved photometric plan, lighting plan, that was done by the engineer for this job. And the original approved plan had 12-foot-tall light posts with a 52-watt LED bulb at the top of it. And what we ended up installing and what is there now, there's nine that were approved here in this, in this drawing, and what we ended up installing was 26 eight-foot-tall 52-watt LED bulbs. And the reason why we did this is, you know, this was classified as a private driveway throughout the, you know, the whole construction of this project. And we took a lot of time and effort to design this project, to come up with a good look on the exterior of the project, whether it be the elevations, the roof lines, everything. And we wanted to stay consistent with the landscaping and the landscape lighting and the light posts. Given that it is a private driveway, we didn't see fit to install a commercial-grade light post down a residential neighborhood. I drove around to a few of the other projects like this in this town and other towns, and I saw more of what was consistent with, with what we ended up putting in this project. So, that being said, there was a few things that we also took into consideration, and that was, you know, we cut in a, in a road into a very densely populated area that we had close to Butters. And as you know, we've, you know, been in here a few other times discussing issues that happened with the Butters, and we wanted to make sure that with us putting up these, you know, 12-foot-tall light posts, we weren't going to be back in here fighting about light pollution that's spilled into people's backyards. So, you know, like I said, we put these light, the eight-foot-tall light posts in here. Instead of nine of them, we put 26. The 26 that we put in are located in close proximity, right in between the sidewalk, the front walkway, and the driveway. So we kind of covered all of our bases where we, where we positioned those. If you look at the photometric drawing that I gave you on that last sheet right there, that shows the photometrics of the 26 light posts that we installed. If you see, it's more evenly spread out throughout the project. Yep, you can see there's, you know, the red areas to the right and in front of the three first units, that depicts evenly spread light, no, no dull spots or, or lulls in between the light posts. You can see, however, that at the forefront, on the main street side, there is some blue, which shows lack of light, and then also on the bridge area, that also shows lack of light. We have all of the infrastructure in and installed the infrastructure for the original planned lights when we put in the cable and, and the electric for this project. We didn't put the light posts in, as I mentioned, because of, we thought we came up with a better design, and we didn't add any in those two dark areas because those are two areas that are very close proximity to backyards of a Butters that had issues with light pollution coming in their yards from the existing residences over in that area. I do think, however, and this is the builder as in general, that we do need a light on Main Street. I myself have driven past this project coming in at night. It's, it's, it's not a very good lighting pattern. There are telephone poles that go up and down 935 Main Street, and there is a light positioned on every other pole. And it just so happens that one is very close to the beginning of this private driveway, and it does not have a, a light on it. I spoke with my electrician, and in collaboration with Selco, we reached out to them, and they do, and did offer to put a security light up on that pole. There's three or four different styles of light that we can choose from to put on that pole and to give the entranceway the, the lighting that it deserves. That would be a $50 install that you pay Selco, and that we pay Selco, and then there'd be a monthly fee that the association would end up taking over, and that fee would be for the electric itself and for, and for the maintenance of that light throughout the lifetime of the project. And I forgot to mention, one of the other reasons that we strayed away from doing the 12-foot-tall light posts is you need to have a way to power those lights. Right now, we have each individual unit powers each individual light that's in front of their unit. There's a photo eye on it, comes on at six o'clock at night, goes out at six o'clock in the morning. The 12-foot-tall, commercial-grade light posts would need their own separate service, and it would need a meter, and then there would be a monthly bill, and then the maintenance would be on the association. When we start these projects, we try to keep the association's fees and their maintenances down as low as possible. This is a common, this is a common build for us. We do this in, in 95% of our projects, especially when it comes to over 55s. The only spot that we put in a commercial-grade light post would be at an, at an intersection.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Rowe?
So you are saying that basically you do have the infrastructure there to go either way, like whether the originally proposed-
We do.
Okay.
We do.
Okay.
Yep, it's there, it's just under the ground. You know, at this point in the project, if we didn't have it there and we had to put this in, it, it would be a, a big undertaking, and, you know, so it is, it is there. If we needed to add a light in a darker area, say where the bridge is, you know, as long as everybody was in agreeance, and, you know, we're not going to be getting phone calls from neighbors complaining about light coming in their windows, you know, we, we want to make sure that this is across the board, it's, it's what everybody wants, but it could be done. Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerry?
You said that the light posts that you did put up are on photoelectric eyes.
That's correct.
Does the homeowner have the ability to turn that off if they don't want it on?
You could take a piece of black tape and just put it over it and cancel that out, and, or, or you could disconnect it, you could run it that way.
I'm just wondering if you've put these up for the safety of the people passing-
We did.
-through, and everybody shuts them off. You have not accomplished-
We haven't had anybody ask to shut them off. We keep, I mean, they're, they're running to kind of act as a streetlight. If you were to drive down the street at nighttime, it gives a surface projection onto the roadway.
My only question, thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
I don't really have any questions. I just, my, I've driven in the site at night, and it is dark, I think it's dark, especially in the entrance, but I think the site is dark the way it sits. My only really comment is I think for safety reasons, I think personally that this isn't a de minimis change, and it should be built as, as it was proposed, just for safety reasons, more than anything else.
Okay, and I kind of echo Mr. Thomas's thought process. When the original site plan was approved, the lighting configuration was already figured out at that point, so I'm not nearly as concerned about the light spillage because that would have been covered through the photometric plan of the original site plan. We did have several residents express opinions through the planning department, and this is a public meeting, and generally during public meetings, we don't necessarily open up for public comment. However, where there was quite a bit of response from the residents, I am willing to open it up for a few questions, as long as we can, if, if there are any residents here that wish to speak on, on this behalf, please keep your comments pointed solely at the lighting consideration, and if we can also not keep repeating, if somebody else said something similar that you were thinking of, just to try to keep this thing moving along. So with that being said, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
My name is Kevin Cowan. I, I live here at number 20. I don't know that we need all nine of these lights. There is some good lighting here, but we definitely do need some lighting, particularly on the bridge, particularly at the entrance, and across from the first two units is the, is a mailbox, and it's quite dark there. So, so we definitely need some lights. I'm not saying we need all of them, but we definitely need some.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, I can't see who's raising it. Yes, ma'am?
Judy DeFalcone, 925 Main Street. I'm the most direct of Butters. That would be severely impacted by lights being at the beginning, especially those first four units, eight units, I believe, there. I do agree, however, that the front, through the light poles and whatever, that should be expanded and, and that light shining down on the entry, that's an exit and an entry. And when this project started five years ago, I went to the police department and they drew records of accidents in the five years before the, before the development was built, and there were 60 known accidents at that corner. I'm an RN, and I keep my, my pack ready for those accidents that happen. Some have resulted in death, so that's a very, very dangerous, and I brought that to the attention of the board five years ago. But I am against light pollution, number one, and number two, the direct illumination of my house and my yard, especially with snow on the ground, this double illumination and double clear. So it has a direct, because I am the only house that has that directed exposure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mike Martin, also 935 Main Street, Unit 28. To the gentleman who spoke of the ride through at night in darkness, would you, my question is, would you consider that a consistent darkness throughout the neighborhood?
Um, I think the bridge was darker than other spots. I think the entrance was dark. So I wouldn't say it's a consistent darkness. I think it's somewhat dark overall, but other spots were darker than they should be.
Okay, so, so you would agree with the way that map lays out dark, red being light, dark, uh, black being dark?
The blue.
Yeah, so- The blue, right?
Blue, rather.
Yeah, so this, this would be the dark.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry, sir, can you just please come up to the microphone, please? Quite frankly, I thought you had a lot of stuff, but the one that was speaking, so.
Can I stop from the beginning? No. So, so I would just say that I, I concur with that, too. Generally, the neighborhood, where the, where the lamp posts are, is rather bright. I live pretty much up near the top, you know, kind of the dead end part of the neighborhood, very bright up there. So I, I would, I would agree with that, and, you know, if there were to be a suggestion about lighting, just lighten up the darkened areas, however, I'm hearing from abutting neighbors, you know, and some concerns about that, but that would be my input.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Okay. So, as I went through the communications that came through, there is a balance between people that were either very much against or very much in favor of this de minimis change, and based on some of the comments that were brought forth today, and, and obviously Mr. Thomas's observation of where we are relative to darkness, and safety is certainly the first and foremost thing that planning deals with. Initially, I'd be honest with you, my, my thought was that I would have rather just straight up go with the plan as, as approved. However, hearing the concerns and some of the, the neighbors' concerns as, as far as light spillage is concerned, it possibly could be a, a, a compromise from here. Certainly, it sounds like Selco is going to do something at the entrance relative to the, the brightness of being able to find your way in. I, I, I open up to the board for comments on whether or not we think that maybe we can do something with the, the planned approval for the bridge area, but leaving the other lights outside of that. Is that something that the board would be considered, or would you just rather hang on to what was approved on a prior plan, the prior plan, or go straightforward with the full de minimis change? Open it up for ideas.
I'm, I'm open to the compromise solution. I think I have some concern about the fact that the residents could disable all the lamp posts that are providing adequate light right now, and, and then there may be some complaints, but I think if everybody is amenable who lives there, that this is a, a acceptable solution, then I don't have an issue with it.
So, can I ask a question? So on the lamp posts, so the individual units are supplying electricity to that, so that-
They are.
When you first brought that up, that was the first thing that came to my mind, if people were starting to worry about electric use, and they would shut them off on their own.
They are, but they're an LED bulb, and they're really pennies on the month. I mean, it's not an expensive bulb to run.
Or beyond the cost, if it's just you want to shut the light off because it's in your window or something, you know, I, I just, you're taking control away from the light that was designed to be there for safety's sake, so. But again, if everybody is comfortable with that and the development, and they don't mind it, then-
I think it would, wouldn't be any different if you had a light post that, you know, was there, and if, if light was coming in, I, I think people would have, you know, the same complaints.
Except that the plan has light posts in it that the residents would have no ability to turn on and off.
Right. So, I mean, I'd like to say that, you know, if, if we go and we have Selco put in a light right there, and we were also going to address, as Kevin said, we were also going to address the, the mailbox area. There were two areas that we were going to put lights on. So let's say if Selco goes and puts a light on that pole, and it still just isn't doing the job, we're okay with adding another pole at the entrance to the project. I mean, we're not adverse, I mean, really, whatever the people want, we're willing to give them. This isn't, we're not backing out on a, a task at hand here. We want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, right now.
I'm encouraged that you have the, the, the work is there for what was approved, because to be honest with you, when you first started out saying that you've already put stuff in before, asking for permission, I remember many a time, things have been happening on this project, and it's like, you know, beg for forgiveness kind of thing, and, and that was really not sitting well with me, and I'm glad to know that the infrastructure is in place. So I don't know, Mr. Thomas, if you have any other questions or comments?
I mean, I could see four lights on this map that should absolutely be there, if you want to say that's a compromise, the one at the entrance, and then the three on the bridge area, and one by-
Those three.
Yeah, so those three, and then the one at the front. Yep, I think those four should absolutely be there. I guess if the residents are okay about not having the other ones, I mean, there were some comments, though, about people saying that it was dark throughout, so that's why, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I, I'm kind of stuck between-
Yeah, I mean-
Hard place here, too.
There was more people saying that it was dark throughout than just in certain areas, so.
Well, I can assure you, if we put up all nine, that will be, it'll look like Ward Hill. It'll be very, very, very bright, and you will be getting complaints about people not being able to go to sleep at night. I guarantee it.
Okay, so seeing as all the infrastructure is, is in place, and I'd like to offset myself, at least anyways, the, the safety concerns, if we went at it, and this, maybe we go at it this way, we go in with the lights in the area around the bridge and in front of that mailbox first, see how that works out for a while, and if the residents come back and say that it's still too dark in other areas, maybe we can revisit, adding additional lights wherever that the dark parts may, may come from. And maybe we can also revisit, instead of a 12-foot-high pole, maybe something other than that, but I think for that bridge area, I, I definitely think that the, the lights that were originally approved need to be there, myself. I don't know, what does everybody think?
Yes, I agree with that.
Does that sound like a reasonable compromise?
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I commend the applicant that he did put in the infrastructure for both options, you know, even though, I mean, only one option was approved, so that's, that's good of the applicant, and as you say, like, Mr. Chairman, whichever one works well for the local residents, you know, you can go as a hybrid model or some compromise of both, or again, since infrastructure is there, later on, if you need to change, switch to one or the other, that's, that's possible, too. So from that point of view, I commend you for that.
Okay, so we're, we're going to need a motion to kind of account for all of this.
Yeah, so you'd still find it as de minimis, you'd just find it as de minimis with specifications, so you'd say the board finds us de minimis to eliminate the need for, I was just counting the lights, one, two, three, I think four, five, five, yeah, five, and to provide four, and then just specify the three over the bridge and the one by the entrance. Sounds like a lot, but I think you can do it.
Well, one of these guys-
One of these guys can do it.
So we, we ready now?
Does anybody have any other comments or questions?
I do not.
We don't have to close a public hearing, so I don't-
It's a public meeting, so.
I move that we approve the, we find the change to the lighting plan as de minimis for 935 Main Street, Wyman Farms, to changing, to keeping four-
Yeah, change.
Change the plan as approved to keeping four of the lights and eliminating five of them temporarily until we can come to, if there is a possibility, we have to come to a resolution later of, on the other five, we can relive that then.
And for the record, the three on the bridge and the one at-
The three on the bridge and the one at the front entrance are the ones that are going to be kept now.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'm going to pull, I'm going, well, I was going to pull everybody, I'm just used to the Zooming, so, okay, we're good.
All in favor, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And as, as people are leaving, can you please do me a favor and keep your conversations slow when you get out to the hallway? Thank you.
If they're happy.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for South Street Falcon Farms' nine-lot subdivision, definitive subdivision, the location, South Street. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Rashid Sheikh, representing Falcon Farms, and I'm company with Ahmad Zarin, our civil engineer.
Please have a seat.
Thank you.
If you'll hold one moment, please. Emily just wanted-
Yeah, I might have to go.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Rashid Sheikh, from Falcon Farms. You still have a full house, we'll just be brief. I'll give a brief introduction of where we are, and then my associate will kind of talk more in detail in terms of the design. We really appreciate your patience, and, you know, especially this project has taken a bit longer. Just to give you a quick history, that basically, you know, we were using the existing color which was built a few years ago, and then unfortunately, DPE comment came in, and they asked if this color was, you know, to the current standards, and the board asked us, and, you know, suddenly it isn't, and they, you know, kind of mentioned and requested if we could upgrade that to the current standards, and suddenly it is heavy lifting, but suddenly we believe it is the right thing to do. And the chair made one request that since you have certain waivers, try to keep it in this, you know, same width and stuff. But we also had a couple of meetings with the, you know, with the agent, and we brought in some new engineering firm, conservation people, surveyors, just to look at everything in a detail, and make sure, because there were some kind of concerns on the width and this and that of what was approved versus what was built. And bottom line is that we have made a lot of progress understanding that the current crossing is 33 feet wide, and we realize that if we are going to upgrade it, then we got to really relook at the whole thing. So we did relook at the, the, the survey, now we have a one-foot contour, we looked at the entire engineering. Now the design you have in front of you, it looked exactly same as last time, but it's a lot more cleaner, and it has far better engineering. You know, so basically, we are now coming up with the 40-feet crossing instead of 33-feet crossing, that gives us ability to make a five-feet-wide, you know, sidewalk as per the regs. It gives us the ability to have the right, you know, grass strip, it gives us the ability to have, you know, right space for the guardrail and what have you. So it'll look essentially the same, but it is a lot more cleaner, it's much better engineering-wise, far more sustainable, and also, we had another crossing, which was the old farmer crossing, which was there, but we are giving that up to make the conservation situation better and, and, and giving us a lot of replication area. So it makes it a lot more cleaner, we believe that, you know, we have come a long way, and with that, I will have Ahmad explain the design updates, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I could, if I could go through the plans?
Please.
For the record, again, my name is Ahmad Zarin, from Development Zarin. As Rashid mentioned, it is a new, new design, similar to the old, to the old plan, but it's a new firm as far as the engineering and as far as the, the survey is concerned.
Sorry.
So we did actually have to, we redid the survey, you know, the, the old survey- So, we did actually have to, we redid the survey, you know, the, the old survey was two-foot contours. So, there's a lot of areas that we, we were guessing on the, on the elevation and whatnot. So, we actually resurveyed the entire property with one-foot contours. That will provide a better, better design, gives us as engineers, better tool to be able to design something that's, that's going to work and that can be built. So, this is the actual property, which you've seen, and this is the, the existing crossing that currently exists. And it's about seven and a half acre long. Like Rashid mentioned, in a nutshell, the subdivision is still a nine-lot subdivision. The roadway itself is still similar, similar about 700, it's under 800 feet in length. We still have nine lots, utilizing the same crossing that we, we had used before. Grading wise, you know, we, we basically maintaining the design standard that the subdivision regs calls for. We have a 2% the first 50 feet, we're going down 10%, you know, beyond that, and flatten out with a, with a SAG curve at the crossing, and then picking the grade back up. Like Rashid mentioned, we are replacing the 15-inch culvert with an eight-by-six box culvert, which will meet the EP standard for, for crossings.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, from 15-inch to eight feet by six feet?
Again, to me, the, you know, the wildlife, the, the lights and what, whatnot that they will go through, all the drainage from the roadway will be picked up, you know, by catch basins, with huts and sumps, and directed into detention basin, which is similarly to what, what you've seen before in the same, same location, but we're providing a, a 10-foot bench around the perimeter of the basin for maintenance. You know, bringing a water line, obviously, for the, for the subdivision. We'll, we'll work with DPW on, on the final size of that. This shows the profile of the road and a layout, and as Rashid mentioned, you know, given that we, we were able to expand the cross-section of the, at the crossing to 40 feet, so we're able to put in a five-foot sidewalk. Initially, I think we had asked for a four-foot sidewalk waiver, so we're going with a five-foot. We're still requesting a waiver on, on sidewalk to be on one side, but we're actually bringing it from South Street all the way around, around the cul-de-sac, all the way to Lot Two. So, in essence, only one lot will have no sidewalk in front of it. We're providing the six-foot grass strips on both sides, as required by, by the guidelines. Guardrails on both sides for the, at the crossing, as well as fencing on top of the retaining walls. This just shows erosion control plan, you know, basically, you know, hay bales and silt fence, you know, outside the, the grading area to protect all the wetlands. Silt sacks along the, at the catch basin during construction, again, to me, to prevent any siltation going into, into the wetland area. We're showing a, you know, potential stockpile area if we be with hay bales around it.
This one, this one, sir. So, Mr. Chair, this is an area which was also used as another crossing, so we are getting away, you know, taking that out.
Basically, using it as a replication area, so bringing it down to the, to the wetland land. This shows a, a planting plan, basically, you know, the subdivision regulation calls for 50 foot on center, and that's what we show, with two, two type of trees. Except at the, at the crossing, obviously, there's no room to, to do trees. And basically, rest of Rashid's just some details. We did receive a comment letter from Graves, we just received it this afternoon, I had a chance to go through it quickly. I believe we could address all the comments, we just have one, one question on one comment that they had regarding hydrology. They requested that we include the lots within, within the roadway design. Part of Shrewsbury DPW guidelines, and Andy would know that, each lot would require a stormwater permit. In order to apply for that and, and get the permit, and get the building permit, the lots will have to meet DEP guidelines for the 100-year storm. So, we'll have to provide recharge and detention on every lot by itself for the 100 years. So, in essence, when, when the entire subdivision is fully developed, the roadway as well as the lots will, the runoff will med, will be mitigated to up to 100-year storm.
You're good. Thank you. So, Mr. Sheikh, the, where are we at with conservation? Have you been in front of conservation with the new plan?
Yes, I saw it even, I saw through here.
No worries.
And so, we actually have a new conservation agent as well, who has done a lot of work, guarded consulting. And he had several one-on-one meetings at the sites, as well as, we had a couple of conservation meetings. Honestly, they put together a lot of things which were, you know, especially this culvert was the biggest deal, and they were asking if we could do this. It took us a little bit of time, it's very costly, it's just require redesign and all that, but we decided to do that, and we believe we have taken care of almost every concern. But again, we are waiting for the next meeting. We believe this would be very much appreciated of what we have done. We believe we can, we can take care of all of their comments. The only one thing which they asked, they tried to keep the same width, even though, you know, Agent was very kind, he basically was encouraging us to, you know, incorporate the planning board and all the others. So, we came up with the happy medium of 40 feet, which will basically, hopefully, still keep, you know, minimum, and we're trying to provide, you know, one-to-six replication and taking care of other... So, there was a lot of positive comments last time, a lot of positive comments. We really don't see any issue with this going forward.
Open up to the board for any questions or comments, or Mr. Rotalakis.
So, I guess you'll be coming back to us after Con, sorry.
No worries.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Usually, he does that over there.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
You stay for tonight.
Yeah. So, once you get the ConCom order of conditions, and you'll come back to us for the final, okay? I, I don't think we issue a decision before ConCom issues.
Never.
Yeah.
Y- y- yes, sir, if I may say, we, we don't even have the time to respond to the Graves' consent, which we believe we can take care of it. But yes, we're not looking to close it tonight, but we believe we are very, very close, and we are going to go to the conservation, the entire package has already been given to conservation. Our agent made a call to the, you know, Conservation Commission agent today, but unfortunately, we don't have the full comments yet. We are very confident that next meeting when we come, we may be able to close it.
Mr. Jerry.
I, I have nothing to add, I think we're still waiting for conservation, so, different meetings, same story.
Yeah, the Rotalakis.
Just like the existing crossing, we're gonna wanna see, if you're expecting the town to accept the road, we're gonna wanna have a structural engineer take a look at this new culvert. So, the sooner you can get to the detail on that to us, the better.
Yes, sir, we, we do believe that basically, this would also be a lot easier, we'll definitely do that, but because we were before trying to put a wall above the current wall, and that was more complicated. And so, this is going to be ground up, we're gonna take the existing and put everything from ground up.
As soon as you're out of there, and you go to town meeting, and the town accepts it, we gotta know that what you're giving us i- is, is gonna be acceptable, and the town isn't gonna be in a position of having to replace it in five or 10 years.
Yes, sir.
That's my only comment.
Mr. Thomas.
I agree with Mr. Jerry, it's, seem like you're always confident that it's, conservation's gonna close, and then it never happens. I understand you're going with the new plan, but this has been going on like a year in front of our board, and we usually don't let things linger this long, as long as I've been here. So, with that being said, I really don't know how much longer I'm gonna wanna let this linger, because we have a lot of other things going on too, and you've had almost a year to... And I understand you've changed the plan and stuff, but I don't know how much longer this is gonna take, I mean, with conservation, seems like they've been going on over a year too.
Sir, we first went in front of them in May, and I think we came in front of you April or May, something like that.
It's almost a year.
Almost a year, but the, the thing is, we went in with the new culvert in the beginning. We were, you know, basically advised to use the current culvert because it was recently built. And our fear was that it might not work, but anyway, so unfortunately, we have gone back and forth. And we got this comment from DP, DEP just a couple of months ago, and we will, you know, we were, we were able to turn things around. We, we honestly, again, it, it doesn't help us from our cost point of view and the time point of view.
I totally get it, right.
It really absolutely doesn't.
We have a lot of the town's time that's cost, you know, we have a lot of our time that's involved, invested in it too, so...
Yes, sir.
So, I'd like to see this get wrapped up sooner than later.
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna be a stickler for tonight, but sooner than later.
Understood, sir.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I've made this comment several times in the past, that we, we really need to get this thing done, so, I would like to be in a position to have, first of all, answers from conservation, that are totally not... We got a couple more questions, but we're gonna take care of it. Conservation should be complete. And if there are anything open, anything open from the grave, grave letter perspective, complete for our next meeting. I, I've offered in the past for you to withdraw without prejudice, to allow you to resubmit very quickly, because if, if, if you get, we're, we're, again, a year. You know, if it comes to us next month and it's not ready, we're gonna have to vote on it as being incomplete, and that'll not necessarily help you all that much, right? So, you know, I'll, I'll still offer the, for you to consider, to withdraw if for some reason conservation is coming up with additional questions that you're not able to satisfy by, by our next meeting. But I, I, I know that there's a lot of documentation that has been going on over the last year that have nothing to do with where you are today, that'll have to be included in the decision because it's part of the, the full meeting process, and it's just gonna be very convoluted and very complex. And actually, withdrawing resets that, and then you're only worrying about dealing with the one plan. So, it's something for you to seriously consider, but to, to Mr. Thomas's point, I, we, I, I'd like to get this off our plate.
By next month.
By next month, okay? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question for Mr. Rotalakis. If you were referring to a peer reviewer for a structural engineer for that wall, the culvert, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's even, you know, given Mr. Thomas's and the chairman's, you know, express, you know, frustration with the, with the timing of this project, it's kind of incumbent on the applicant to get us that detail sooner than later, if it's gonna have to get reviewed by a structural engineer.
Yep, okay, no, I just needed to know, to know which...
Oh, we're gonna accept it, right?
Right, no.
This is a bridge, we're gonna accept it.
Absolutely.
We own it, after, after town, after town meeting votes on it, so...
Mr. Chair, may I get a clarification, sir?
Yes, sir.
So, we actually had a peer review on the previous, you know, structural design, which was again, similar, but the biggest issue really was that we were trying to build the wall to, to come up with the grade on the existing wall.
I'm gonna stop you right there, this is a new design.
Yes, sir.
So, we need a new design, this design to be reviewed, that's Mr. Rotalakis's point.
Yes, sir, I, I was going some, sorry, I was going with something else.
Okay.
I'm saying, because not all the time you have the peer review, peer structured view on the, because this is... That last time I understood, because, you know, we were building a wall above the wall, this is more like, you know, wall building, you know, from the ground up. Do you still require the, the, the structural peer view on that, because I wanna make sure I get the...
What's the length of the crossing?
We're proposing a segmental wall, which is a commonly approved.
How long, how long is the crossing, how long is the span?
What do you think? I guess the wall is about 60 or 70 feet long, but it's a three-foot blocks, and we're starting from ground up. And it's, usually, it's, it's a design-built wall. Those walls there, I mean, they're used everywhere.
I, I think what Musa Boulay is saying also is, we all understand that, but now a year has gone by, and now there's a new plan in front of us, so we're suggesting again that maybe withdrawing without prejudice and then resubmitting over again to start over would be your best course of action, because it's gone on so long.
It's better for you, and it's better for your, your homeowners to know that, you know, God forbid that you, you build this, and the D, the DPW or the engineering department says, geez, we really don't like, you know, what was done here. We, we have concerns that, about the, the lifespan of, of this, of this bridge or this crossing. You know, it's better to flush it out now, it's better for you, it's better for your homeowners, it's better for the town.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Nope.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have no other comments, so...
Sorry.
By all means, move on.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to...
We have a decision deadline.
Oh, we have to change that too.
We do, yes, so, I guess within the motion, you probably wanna make the motion to extend the decision deadline and the public hearing.
He's got a, doesn't he, he has to, has he signed a request?
Yes, Emily's handed it to him.
Okay.
Should be April 7th?
It's April 7th, his next meeting.
You're doing it anyway, Steve, I just wanna write that.
Okay, I move that we continue the public hearing on the South Street Falcon Farms, nine-lot definitive subdivision, until Thursday, April 7th at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is a new public hearing, Mr. Thomas will read the, the notice.
Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, March 3rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue. Hear the application of Sri Siddhi Vinyaka Devastan Incorporated, Baravamavi Baravamothan, 203 Deacon Shattick Way, Westboro, Mass. 01581, required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7D3, subsection 5, for a special permit to allow for remote, unenclosed parking spaces within 200 feet of the property line. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled Site Plan dated August 7, 1986, revised through August 18, 1986, on two sheets, prepared by EJ Flynn Engineers, 31 East Main Street, Westboro, Mass. 01581, stamped by Fred Lewis. The subject property is located southerly of Boston Turnpike and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Pay 35, Plot 025001. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, and just for clarification, this is for a remote off-street parking special permit for location 810 Boston Turnpike.
Yeah.
Is the applicant present, please introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Sarah Berry, I'm with Cutler Management, we're representing the building owner, Shrewsbury Central Park LLC.
And I'm Sivas Pramani, I am a board member of the temple, representing the temple.
So, in order for them to operate out of the temple, they're trying to open and get the occupancy that they're looking for, so they just need to make sure they have sufficient parking. The property owner owns two commercial buildings on, on the same site. So, we worked with a parking engineer after, we, we have updated site plan, which is visible since the 1986 plans, we were asked to update them. And his recommendation was that we have sufficient parking between the two buildings to satisfy all the uses at the building for them to have their 55-person occupancy limit.
Is there any questions or comments from the board, Mr. Row?
Can you get a little bit more into the, the current situation with the parking and how many parking spaces you have?
So, between the two properties, there are 133 parking spaces. So, currently, the zone that he, the area that he's renting is zoned as an off... So currently, the zone that he, the area that he's renting is zoned as an office space, and he submitted a separate permit for occupancy change to have the religious use center. So then that would increase from 20 to 55 persons. And based on the recommendation of the engineer, we will still have in excess of 11 or 12 spaces after their increase.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no questions.
Mr. Rotalakis.
I have no questions.
Mr. Thomas.
No questions, sir.
I don't have any questions either. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the remote off-site parking special permit for 810 Boston Turnpike.
Are there any questions or comments relative to where we want to go with this? Mr. Jared.
I have none.
We don't have a draft decision made, but we can.
No, you can vote.
We can make a motion to.
Yeah, and I will draft the decision tomorrow. I did have one request to the board, it's very administrative, as a condition to the table that was done for the parking is done by use and not by the building. That's how it's been put together, so I would just like to request a condition that says the final plan that gets submitted for the building permit, just have that broken down into the two buildings, that's it.
Vote on my motion, though, right? Second?
We'll vote on your motion, and then we'll second.
Okay, I just.
Did you make a motion?
I did, I'm going to close.
Yes, you had voted on it.
No, we hadn't voted on it.
No, no.
We haven't voted on any.
We didn't vote on it.
No.
We didn't vote on the decision, no.
I don't think we voted on the close, did we?
We didn't.
No, no, I did.
I apologize.
Okay.
Do I have a second to close our public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're all over the place today, sorry.
That's okay.
Now I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we grant the special permit and authorize the clerk to sign a decision relative to ATED Boston Turnpike, which will incorporate the parking use tables as shown on the plan dated March 2nd, 2022.
Do you want to put the caveat with the tables being broken out?
Yeah.
Separate tables.
With separate tables, please.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next public hearing, Mr. Rotalakis will be abstaining. Our next public hearing is a new public hearing for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, Site Plan Modification, Demulus Supermarkets Incorporated, location is Hartford Turnpike. Please introduce themselves. Oh, I apologize. I am all over the place. Legal notice, please, Mr. Thomas.
The Shusbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, March 3rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue. Hear the application of Demulus Supermarkets Incorporated, 875 East Street, Tewksbury, Mass. 01867. For Site Plan Modification by the Planning Board as required by the Town of Shusbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F3, to revise and decrease the footprint of the two previously approved outbuildings and the attached retail space as shown on plans entitled Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, dated June 19th, 2019, and revised through February 9th, 2022, prepared by R.J. O'Connell and Associates Incorporated, 80 Montvale Avenue, Stoneham, Mass. 02180, stamped by John J. Stoy PE, and consisting of seven sheets. Subject project is located on the south side of Hartford Turnpike and consists in whole or in part of Shusbury Assessors Tax Plate 52, plot 128000. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shusbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Please introduce themselves.
Chair, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Todd Roder from Fletcher-Tilton, also a resident in town, 18 Rice Street. Here on my left is Roy Smith from R.J. O'Connell Associates, and behind us, Jim Lamb from LT Development as part of the project team. As the clerk read, we are here on Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, and a site plan modification for this project, which I'm sure you're very familiar with. The overall project was approved by you folks with a market basket, pharmacy would drive through, bank would drive through, general retail space, and then residential. We're looking to modify certain of those elements as we've identified a couple of tenants that will be going in the Plaza, Clinton Savings Bank, and Starbucks. So, you know, we'll have Roy kind of walk through those site changes that are applicable for these, these couple of tenants. We mentioned we're in receipt of Mr. Kay Hill's compiled review letter and Graves Engineering's review letter as well. We did make a response to those comments, and we have one further item to update you on as we, as we walk through tonight, which dealt with the fire department's concern about access around Starbucks. So, you know, with that, you know, I'll have Roy kind of walk you through some of the site changes.
Thanks, Todd. My name is Roy Smith. I work for R.J. O'Connell Associates. I am a vice president. We are the site civil engineers associated with the mixed-use development, not only on the residential side, but the commercial side as well. We're in front of the board tonight to talk about two commercial, all parcel pads, and they are, they are located in this vicinity and along the signalized entrance drive as well. The previously approved plans, we had about a 13,000 square foot pharmacy with the associated drive-through and parking, and then we used to have a bank with the associated drive-through and the associated parking. Those, we have now, Demulus has now gotten tenants for those two out parcel buildings. The pharmacy is going to be switching to a bank, about 2,700 square feet, with the associated parking. And then the bank is basically going where the pharmacy was, previously approved, and the bank is going to be replaced by a Starbucks with the associated drive-through. We've submitted plans, and we've received responses, and we've responded to the plans in the comments. And basically, a lot of it had to do with updating the parking table to separate the Starbucks parking based on seats and drive-up counters. So we've done that, and we've updated the parking table, resubmitted that to this board. We've also separated out, if you look in this area here, there used to be the market basket and then a smaller tenant and a potential tenant. We've also separated out those two buildings. We used to have it combined as an overall retail because we didn't have the tenant makeup, and we still don't have the tenants for those two buildings as of yet, but it's more defined as units two and three. And with that, we've broken up that unit two and three into the parking table as well, as requested. One of the things that recently came up is we responded to the Starbucks pad, Bernie, if you could kind of focus on that. As you can see, we have the signalized entrance that's under construction now at the Lake Street, Route 20 intersection. They come in, and that used to be the bank pad, it's getting replaced with a Starbucks pad with the associated drive-throughs. There's two drive-through lanes there, and based on some of the comments we received from engineering and from the fire department, they asked if we could allow a fire truck to do, locate around the perimeter of this entire Starbucks building to get access to all four sides of the building, and then egress the site. So what we've done most recently, we widened the perimeter drive-through lane to allow that turning movement to happen, to allow a fire truck and emergency apparatus to go through and traverse through that. I have the updated plans. We've coordinated with the fire department, Seth Colby. We've received an email early today from Seth saying, thanks for the plans. They meet with our approval. Thanks for revising it and being responsive. So I think bottom line is where, I think we've addressed all the response letters, including the Graves peer review response. I think from an engineering perspective, we're increasing open space with this change by above 4,000 square feet, which is significant. So we don't have to modify the drainage system or the stormwater management. That's already, it just makes it a little bit better than it was previously approved and built.
So the extra space is going to be vegetated?
Yes, yeah.
So, I know there was a question about additional parking spaces being as reserved parking spaces to.
Yeah, I can point to that. If you go to the bank, Bernie, yeah, so there's, if you look above the 40, the number 40, which is 40's parking spaces there, I think the comment was, can we turn those eight additional, those eight parking spaces and make even more open space, and either eliminate those or reserve those? And I do believe Jim Lamb would, if we want to, he'd rather just not even put them in reserve, he'd just rather eliminate them if that's the board's choosing. But I just want to note that it's not required because we are already increasing about by 4,000 square feet of open space.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Lamb, professional engineer with LT Engineering. Market Basket likes to park with, for their stores, about six per thousand. As you know, it's a very popular store, and it does very well when they move into areas that there are other stores to service the residents. We would prefer leaving those eight spaces. We think that those spaces will be used during our peak hours, but if the board sees it in their wisdom that they'd like to reserve, trying to come in later and put them in is disruptive, it will just be a mess, it will hurt operations. I'd just say we won't fill them, but we would much prefer having them stay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments, or?
No, I think that's about all at this point. We will be submitting a separate signage package associated with the overall commercial development that's not part of this seminal package.
Very good. Board member comments, Mr. Row.
No, no comments, Chair.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no comments on this.
Mr. Thomas.
The bypass lane around Starbucks, I know that was an issue, that's the one that was fixed by Seth and.
Yeah, I have these updated plans hot off the press that I can give the board, and that's what he's blessed, and they showed the fire truck making that maneuver around the.
You have that, Bernie?
I do not have it.
I'm bringing it with me.
It's at that desk.
Okay, all right. Yeah, other than that, I have no, that was the only thing I was, had on my plate.
Mr. Cahill, do you have any?
Yeah, the only thing I would ask from Roy is when you, if you don't have it in that package of materials, to submit the fire department's approval. I'm not sure I was on that communication this morning.
Yeah, I, well.
If I wasn't, you can print out the email, that's.
There's a lot of emails.
Yeah, I've been back and forth with Mr. Colby as well, so I'm confident he was on top of it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, he's actually been remote, Mr. Chairman, so, Deputy Fire Chief, so we appreciate his efforts. He's been training, like actually remote, physically remote for training, so he's, but has put in the time to review this for us, so much appreciated.
I want to personally thank not only Bernie, but Seth Colby as well. I got an email from him, like 9 o'clock one night, so, with his comments, so.
Very good. I don't have any additional comments either. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, Site Plan Modification.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before us, we have a draft decision. Is there any questions or comments relative to the draft decision?
No comments.
I have none.
Do we have to add the condition about the bypass lane around the Starbucks?
No, because they have the revised plan in.
Okay.
So we can just go with the draft decision as written?
We can go with it?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, well, I will add the dated update to the plan.
Okay.
And any other materials that come in, so, and then I'll bring it by.
What about the parking spots?
I, well, you started deliberations, you're welcome to ask me my opinion.
I'll ask your opinion, Mr. Cahill.
I don't really have an opinion, I think it's perfectly fine to leave them in.
Very good. It was just a comment that I had come across, and I just wanted to find out what the status was, and if anybody had any particular reason to not have them placed, if there is no particular reason, and seems, understanding from the engineering point of view, that if they do need the additional parking, it would be rather disruptive to put them in, so. I'm fine with keeping them in as the plan already describes.
Okay.
I am playing.
So, I'll take a motion, Mr. Thomas.
I move that we approve the decision of the planning board regarding the application for Site Plan Modification, 180 Hartford Turnpike and 200 Hartford Turnpike, 228 Hartford Turnpike, Route 20 Nominee Trust and Demulus Supermarkets Incorporated as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item of business is a new public hearing for One Greenbrier Road, Over 55 Housing Development Site Plan Approval and Special Permit. Cypress Avenue Development LLC, location is One Greenbrier Road. Mr. Thomas has a legal notice.
The Shusbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, March 3rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Cypress Avenue Development LLC, 18 Glenwood Street, Natick, Mass. 01760, as required by the Town of Shusbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F3 and Section 5, Table 1, Use Regulation Schedule for Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for the Construction of a Senior Housing Development, consisting of 66 Units in Section 7K6A3, for a Special Permit to Allow for a Fee in lieu of Providing On-Site Inclusionary Housing Units. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled Sut Development Plan for One Greenbrier Drive, dated February 9th, 2022, on 25 sheets prepared by J.M. Granier and Associates, 118 Turnpike Road, Suite 200, Southboro, Mass. 01772, stamped by Todd P. Chapin, PLS, and John M. Granier, PE. Subject property is located easterly of Cypress Avenue, westerly of Interstate Route 290, and consists in whole or in part of Shusbury Assessors Tax Plate 09, Plot 001000, and Tax Plate 09, Plot 012000. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shusbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The applicant present, please introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Granier with J.M. Granier Associates, I'm the project engineer, and I'm here with Mr. Stephen Blum, who is the applicant and proponent for this project. What I handed out was just a reduced copy of the presentation plan, just so you can kind of look at the project, the main part of the project in its entirety. So this project consists of two parcels. If you recall, Mr. Blum was in not too long ago for the approval for Cul-de-sac Road off of what was a stub on Greenbrier. So with that subdivision road approved, what we are proposing to do is to subdivide off the southerly portion of the lot that Mr. Blum approved, and there was also about a 17-acre parcel that was adjacent to 290, that was a landlocked piece. So that, this landlocked piece is being combined with the southerly portion of the Greenbrier property to create one parcel that's about 38 and a half acres. So what we are proposing on the 38 and a half acres is a 66-unit, Over 55 Townhouse development, and this would consist of both a mix of duplexes and single units, primarily concentrated in the center portion of the site. I'd like to note that, under the zoning, that you're allowed to do four units per acre, so under the zoning, rather than 66 units, we would have the ability to do, I believe, 166 units. So in terms of allowable density, we're quite a bit under that, we're about 100 units under that. What we tried to do was limit the amount of disturbance. We centered and clustered the units from north to south in the center portion of the site, and on the easterly portion, we have 12 units that are located, and most of those, or a handful of those, are single units, just to try to limit the massing, because we have our closest abutter. just to try to limit the, the massing because we have our closest abutter, um, who I believe is here tonight, is, uh, located, they have a common driveway that comes off of Gulf Street. And there's three, uh, single-family houses that are located to our east. So, uh, and actually, we're trying to work with, with one of the closest abutters to try to increase the, uh, the limit of clearing and, and give him as much buffer as possible. And we've been kind of going back and forth, providing options so that we can provide them some additional buffer area. What we are proposing for amenities with this project is, uh, when you come into the site off of the Greenbrier Cul-de-sac, uh, we have an R access drive that circulates throughout the site. The first building that you come to is going to be a clubhouse, so there will be a clubhouse associated with this because of the, the, the scope of the project. We think it's appropriate to have a, a common clubhouse, uh, to service the, the project. Um, one other amenity that we are proposing is, and if you kind of look, there's, you can see a, a brownish dash line that goes cross-country just south of the clubhouse. So, we're going to propose, uh, a walking trail that would, uh, wind southerly down the site. And then there is, um, in the, the meat of the site, as you head towards two ninety, there is, uh, an upland area that is to the, the mid portion of the site, but on the easterly side, it's wooded. Uh, we're proposing to have a walking trail through there, through that upland area, so as, again, another amenity for the site. Um, so people can walk their dogs, they have a, ability to have, um, enjoy the site and not just have to rely solely on, on the driveway that loops through the site. Um, one item that we are proposing and, uh, we'd like to discuss with the board is, it was a little bit unique, um, it's, it's a concept that, uh, we are actually, um, it, it was approved in a project we just did in, in Bellingham, is we're proposing twenty-four feet wide pavement. But within that twenty-four feet of pavement, we were going to dedicate four feet as, and stripe it off as, uh, basically a walking lane. And so there would be, uh, you'd still have twenty-four feet wide of pavement, but we would dedicate, um, four feet of it to pedestrian traffic. And the reason for that is, um, twofold. In terms of maintenance, a lot of times in these developments, they'll come in, they'll plow the road, they'll salt the road. And then it's kind of, the, the sidewalks get treated last. So, in this instance, when they come in, they plow the road, they salt it. You have the, the walking path and the walking area along the road is already cleared. Most people i- in my, from other developments we've done, they tend not to use the sidewalks as much. There's not that much traffic. They tend to walk down the shoulder of the road anyway, so. In trying to keep the limit of pavement or the, the amount of impervious area down, we were looking as that, as a, as kind of a, a, a nice, unique option for this site. We did get some comments from the fire department, um, and we had a discussion with them. He's, as I, he's been remote and I've been talking with him over the phone. We went through the whole project and, um, we looked at locations of hydrants and some turning radii. And, um, I think he's in pretty good shape, but, uh, beyond that, he was looking for twenty-two feet clear of pavement beyond any walking or, or sidewalk, so, um, w- w- we will need to add enough, we have twenty-four feet of pavement right now. We're going to have to add another two feet. The question is, do we add that with a curb and a sidewalk? Or do we leave it open so that, um, there is still a walking lane, but there is no curb separating? Um, given that, in these types of projects, there's typically not a lot of traffic, um, not a lot of fast traffic, and people tend not to use the, the sidewalks as much anyway. So, I'd like to throw that out to the board for, for their, their opinions and, and discussion on that. We did have a traffic study associated with this project, um, that was submitted. I do have the results of that and, um, just in an overview, um, as everyone knows, over fifty-fives, these type of projects don't tend to generate quite a lot of traffic. Um, but the conclusion, and I can, I can quote from our, from our, uh, analysis. It says, uh, "Once distributed onto the adjacent streets, traffic increases as a result of the development are expected in the range of fifteen to sixteen additional vehicles on Cypress Avenue. North of the site during peak hours, on average, these increases are minimal and represent approximately one additional vehicle every four minutes." Says, "Traffic increases on Greenbrier Drive and Sewell Street, south of Greenbrier, are expected in the range of thirteen to sixteen additional vehicles." It says, "These increases represent, on average, one additional vehicle every three and a half to four and a half minutes." Uh, it says, "Traffic increases on all other hours of the day are expected to be minimal and well within the daily fluctuation of traffic." So, uh, based on the traffic study that we, we submitted, we don't anticipate that this will, um, ha- have an effect on, on the local traffic. We do know that, um, going up Cypress, that is the back entrance to the high school. Um, I've been zipping up there at seven fifteen, seven thirty in the morning, trying to get kids to school. So, I, I know there is quite a, a, a lot of traffic, um, especially that early in the morning when kids are going to school. Um, but we don't anticipate that due to the, the type of project that it is, um, it is an over fifty-five, that that would, um, re- really pose any, a- any negative effect onto the current traffic situation, especially in the morning when, when people are going to the high school. Um, so we did get comments from Graves Engineering. We, uh, we got those a few days ago. We've been going through those. We did get comments from the planning department as well, um, a- as some of the other departments. Uh, we're starting to roll through those and, and digest them and, and look at modifications. Um, we would like to get, obviously, your input and get some feedback from you so then when we come back, we can provide a, a complete set of, of revised and updated plans. So, with that, I'd put it back to the chair with any, any questions or comments.
Okay, I'll go around with the board first, Mr. Rao.
Um, that walking area that you mentioned, um, knowing that this is going to be fifty-five plus community, I would think that they want a good walking area that's safe and secure too. Um, my personal preference would be to keep it outside of the road, way, like a walkway. And since this is going to be a private roadway and private walkway, um, to make sure that, that is, that it is walkable, um, this community certainly needs a, a good walking area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I think, uh, having that be part of the roadway structure, I personally don't think it's safe, uh, for that population. That's, uh, my, my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jerry?
Yeah, that, that was honestly my comment too. It seemed sort of contradictory to be putting in walking trails as an amenity and then say, nobody's really going to be walking, so you don't need sidewalks, so.
Well, the, they tend not, I, I, I wouldn't say they're not going to walk, but I know when we walk the dog a- around in, in these types of neighborhoods, we don't use the, we don't use the sidewalks because half the time the dog is off sniffing here, sniffing there. You just say, it's, it's too much of a headache. We'll, we'll keep them in the roadway. There's not much traffic. There's not cars zipping by at forty miles an hour. It's, you know, limited traffic, so we tend to just walk in the roadway. So, we're like, alright, for the ease of keeping it clear, we would do that. But I, I understand your concerns and, and we'll address it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's an interesting idea. I think I'm, I'm with Mr. Rao. I think my preference would be for a more traditional setup there, but that was the only comment I had.
Okay, Mr. Otalakis.
You know, my big concern is, as you don't have a secondary means of egress or another entrance to the project, you know, I, I'm concerned about the length of the dead end. And I don't know whether it can be done or not, but, uh, my suggestion would be that for the dead end that comes up to the heart of the project, uh, that'd be a double-barrel road. Because, um, i- if there's an issue, you, you want emergency vehicles to be able to get to the project. Um, it's, it's a pretty big wave you're looking for and, uh, you know, uh, that would certainly, in my mind, make that a lot more palatable.
Okay.
Because you have a lot of units at the end of a dead end, essentially a dead end.
Right, and, and just for the record, like historically, I know on, on other projects we've done as well as, um, other projects in town, such as, um, Adams Farm, it was, the, the view was, this is an interior driveway. It's not a subdivision road. It's not, like, we're not building a, a, a fifty-foot ri- wide right-of-way with a, a road that's going to have through traffic. It's an interior driveway. So, in the past, we've, um, had other roads that were in excess of a thousand feet. Um, and there was no question or, or request for waivers to subdivision standards because it's not a subdivision. Um, but with that said, for safety, we, we do appreciate that and we're not opposed to having a, a double-barrel entrance. And we can work, um, I've had some good conversations with, uh, with the fire department, deputy fire chief, and I can work with him on that.
Anything else at this time?
That's my big concern.
Mr. Thomas?
Where you at with conservation?
We have, um, an application submitted. We're going to be seeing them on the third.
A week from next.
Yeah, week from next Tuesday, or Tuesday of the month.
So, you haven't had any meetings with them?
We, no, we have everything submitted and we're going to be before them in a couple of weeks.
So, with the amount of wetland that's here, this could change dramatically?
I don't think so, but, um, I'm sure they'll have comments. Um, w- we, we are meeting all of the D E P Stormwater Management Guidelines. We do have, uh, one crossing and for the access drive, we do have a little bit of filling and we're replicating that. So, we're meeting all the rules and regulations. Um, not that they're not going to have qu- questions or concerns, but I, I, I don't see that the scope of it changing significantly.
Okay, um, I also have issues with the traffic from the density of this project in the proximity of it to the high school. Um, and it, I, you know, I also have kids that go to the high school and I know it's not just a drive-in in the morning and drive-out at night thing. It's traffic all day long coming in and out of the high school. Activities, sports, clubs, all that kind of stuff. Um, so I think with the neighborhood being taxed, with the high school being up there, and then adding this, I think is a big ask for that. That's one concern of mine. Um, you know, the snow storage issues, overflow parking issues. Um, so I see quite a few issues with this. Um, the way it sits right now, I think there's a lot of, I think we have a long way to go before we figure out exactly what's right, but I see a, a few different items here that I think that are definitely going to need to be addressed, mainly because of the density. So, that's my comments to begin.
Good, thank you. Um, I actually have several comments as well, some of which have been brought up by prior board members. Um, I'm less inclined to agree with using the twenty-four wide road and striping it. I, I just find that to be extremely unsafe, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm not inclined to, to fit in that, uh, realm. The, um, uh, the mention that Steve had relative to the length of the road is, is a lot. That's more than three times, just around three times, what the, um, the rules and regulations traditionally allow for. I don't know if you've gotten fire department comments, um, at all from this?
We did, and, and the biggest, um, item that we talked about was, um, making sure that we had adequate overflow parking so that would, um, have residents, if, if they did have, uh, you know, people over, whatever, they would have overflow places to park and they wouldn't be parking on the shoulder of the road. Um, so that was his biggest concern. So, he said if we could increase and, and distribute some additional, um, res- um, visitor parking, um, he had no, and he wanted twenty-two feet wide of, of driveway to, to circulate through the site. And then, uh, the last thing we talked about was, uh, locations of some hydrants so that we could distribute some, uh, fire hydrants throughout the site a little more evenly. Um, he didn't have any issues with the, the length of, of access driveways. He just wanted to make sure that we did have adequate areas for visitors to park so that, um, if they did pull in, nobody would be parking on the shoulder of the road. Yeah, I had, I had parking, um, visitor parking as being a challenge because, um, I think by my count, there were, uh, there's only eight spaces at the clubhouse and a total of eleven other spaces throughout the, uh, the site, which I don't find even close to being adequate, especially if there are visitors that come and park on the street. Your, your, your road is very, very narrow at that point, so I find that to be a, quite a bit of a challenge. I'm, I'm, I'm a little intrigued with how you're handling the sewerage on this, having, um, two proposed septic systems to support the entire proj- uh, project. So, if you could kind of explain to me how, how you're planning on doing that? Um, yes, the area that is, um, across from the clubhouse, um, there was testing done, um, as part of Steve's previous project. They went throughout the site. So, the area directly across from the clubhouse, uh, has good soils. Um, and that would be an area that, obviously, we, you saw how we left that open. Uh, that would be in, uh, an area that would feed, um, the, the septic for the, the main portion, center portion of the site. Um, and then we would have a secondary area, and again, we're relocating that um, to address con- some concerns for the abutter on the, on the easterly side where those twelve units are. We're looking to place those, um, adjacent to the area where that single unit number sixty-six is. We're reconfiguring some things, so we're going to, we're looking to place that over there. Um, I've talked to the board of health agent. Um, we discussed areas where we're putting septic systems. And, uh, she was aware that there were good soils. She was in agreement that there are good soils in those areas. Excuse me. Um, but we've done systems that we have an entire, one main system that feeds up to sixty-six units. Um, it's just you have to have adequate sizing. We know we have good soils. Um, just to make sure you have adequate areas so that you can leach that, uh, that gray water into, into the ground. Um, how it's works on this, it's, which is similar to other projects we've done in town, is, uh, every few buildings would go into a septic tank. That's where the solids follow. Then, um, those, from those septic tanks, it would go into what would, you'd probably say a traditional type of, uh, sewer line in the street, so just the gray water would be flowing down the sewer line and then that would go into the, in, into the septic area. So, um, we have good soils. We have adequate area for it. Uh, we've done systems like this before. Um, and we don't, from talking to the board of health too, uh, we're not concerned that, that there's any type of issue associated with that.
And only because we've had several different septic systems over the years that were designed, uh, is this expected to be at grade or are we planning on a six-foot-high wall of, uh?
No, what, um, if, what we, what we've done is, on the access drive that, um, goes southerly in, into the main portion, we are raising the grade up as we approach the main portion of the site. Um, so then, in that area where the septic is, we're about seven or eight feet above existing grade. Um, and so, it will be quote-unquote raised because it's going to be above existing grade, but it's going to blend in with the grading done on the site. So, it's not going to be a, you're not going to see a mound. Everything will go, um, i- gravity into that. So, it's not going to be a mounded-up area. It's going to blend into the, into the roadway grade.
Okay, um, one of the other concerns I have, um, basically around the, the large section, the meat of the, uh, project, is quite a bit of, um, heavy grading that's going to happen there. Um, whereas we've, you know, nine thirty-five Main Street's a great example. That could present some problems, so, um, I would just want to get ahead of that saying, we're going to want a really strong geotechnical review of all of those, e- every one of them in this entire site to, um, to ensure that it's, um, it's going to be safe for the long haul. Um, it's, it's pretty significant, um, and, um, I just don't want it to be lost.
Understood, and just so you know, what we, on, on the, uh, westerly side of the site, that is an area of cut, um, that's a maximum of a two-to-one slope. At the top of that slope, we have a, a stone-lined swale or channel so that any of the upgrading water was going to, will hit that channel. channel. You're not gonna have water running down the side slope and that's where you get rutting, you get issues. You wanna keep all water as much as you can off the slope. The only thing hitting is raindrops. So we're um, capturing the up gradient water from that slope. Um, we have one swale that heads north, the other one heads like south and around to the east. And then on the down gradient side, on the easterly side, um, those are three-to-one slopes primarily. And, and we have one small area that's two-to-one, but primarily they're three-to-one slopes. So, but I agree, no, we're, we're fine with, with having a geotech um, review of it. What we would like to do is uh, we have a geotech engineer who we've used on several other projects. We don't have him view it. If that's fine and, and produce a report to the board. That, that's the direction we would like to go with it. But it, it would be obviously reviewed by a, 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 a well-established consultant um, who we've worked with. Um, actually, he was, he was a consultant at the end of nine thirty-five Main Street. He was, he was the uh, designer of the wall and he reviewed the slopes as well. So, he's familiar with these types of sites. So that's one suggestion we'd, we'd like to throw out there.
I think ultimately we would have a peer review for the town's um, interest anyways, or even though this is going to be a private area that the town is not going to take ownership of and, or responsibility for. Um, we still, safety is, is by far and away is, is gotta be, as I mentioned earlier tonight, is first and foremost. The other question I have is, wha- what about water pressure? Do we, you feel you're gonna have enough water pressure to push this?
That was, that was a comment um, from the DPW and we were unaware that there could be potential um, water pressure issues out here. So we're gonna have to have some conversation with them, get some fire hydrant fire flows. It was a surprise to me that they would say that because just elevation-wise, um, Cypress Ave is considerably higher than us. Obviously, the, the high school is considerably higher. We're pretty much the, one of the, the lowest locations in the area. So um, we'll have to talk to the DPW about that and, and see, see what, what comes of it.
Cause this would have to be sprinkled, correct?
Uh, yeah, this has to be sprinkled as well, right.
They're gonna have separate connections or off the main?
We need to talk to the DPW about that too, because typically what we've done in the past, it's, it's been like um, a typical, you have uh, you know, six, eight-inch water main, then you tap off that with a, a domestic and a sprinkler line. What the water department may be looking for is a dedicated sprinkler line and a dedicated domestic line coming off of Greenbrier, which um, the, the one thing that actually someone in my office brought up today, well, if the sprinkler line, you have that loop through the site, that water is gonna sit, that water's not flowing like the domestic. It's gonna sit there stagnant. And then you may have issues with buildup within those lines and um, so that's something we need to talk to with the, with the DPW and the water department.
Mr. Trum, is that anything that we've had trouble with in the past in terms of?
No, so we did bring this up early when we met with the applicants, um, early on and we, we've raised, this is the low-pressure area and we have some serious concerns that we're gonna be able to be minimum pressure, uh, certainly for fire safety. We've, we've brought that to their attention. So that needs to be. We would probably recommend that it's reviewed by the town's consultant Howard too as part of the process for fire flow, but it, it's gonna be an issue.
Andy, is that on a separate?
It is on, it's on the low. It's not on the same high pressure as the high school.
Okay, it's a separate, it's a separate branch?
It's, it's gonna be tough to get pressure.
Well, I know that, I had quite a few comments there. I'm sure the more I look at this, I can probably come up with some more, but it's just, we're looking at the general site as, as first seen, right? So um, and
The snow storage was an issue.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you, I think you had mentioned earlier that's not, uh, snow storage is a big concern of mine too. It's, it's from what I saw on the plans, it's, it's gotten very limited amount of snow storage. And I'm not sure if that even accounts for what you're gonna do with all the snow that's on the, the driveways. So, snow storage is, is somewhat of a concern as well.
Okay.
Look, looking at the plan, it looks like you anticipate that the, all the wastewater is gonna be gravity too, no pumps?
I don't, I don't anticipate any, the, the, of the, of the loop driveway on the easterly side. We were looking at that. That's the lowest um, the, the lowest area. So we're looking at making sure we can get that gravity without having sewer lines, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen feet in the ground. So um, we can get it there gravity, it's just making sure that we take it. There might be a section that goes cross-country um, behind units thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four, cause those are walkouts. So then we wouldn't be buried deep into the ground with that. But we can get everything gravity there. I just wanna make sure that the pipes aren't too deep into the ground.
Uh, only other, just a quick comment. Um, most of the site is away from a butters. However, the area that's uh, that Steve mentioned, that the uh, the double barrel road should be consideration. That's the closest area to uh, to a butters and just wanna make sure that um, you know, as much screening, landscaping, you know, overdo it. Especially cause I believe that the, that's another area that was planning to have the uh, the septic um, for that surface of that section of the, of the site.
And, a- and we're not opposed to obviously doing screening. The, the butters that are either on Cypress or over on Redwood, there is uh, quite big elevation drop from their yards down to us, um, ten feet plus. So uh, I don't, we're not gonna have issues with uh, you know, glare from uh, headlights or any of that. Um, but we're not opposed to, to doing some along that slope, even though it's, and we can work with the neighbors too if there's some evergreens or something along that slope. Some of that area um, on the backside of some of the neighbors, it's kind of a steep drop. And then there's, you know, it's brushy and branches. So uh, we wouldn't be opposed to working with them to kinda clean up that slope and then do some plantings and, and make it an area that's nice for, for both parties.
Okay. Is there any other?
I just have a follow-up on the, on the septic um, uh, system that you um, uh, are proposing. Do you anticipate having to go to Mass DEP for any approvals on that part or just the local, uh, the Shrewsbury Board of Health?
Just Shrewsbury Board of Health. We're not gonna meet any thresholds that, that we'd have to go um, to, to DEP.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Oh, you look like you were gonna say something. Mr. Cale, any questions or comments?
Um, only that I am working with the GIS coordinator to get this board, I mean, the public as well if they want it. A map of the town showing, uh, highlighted all the different senior housing developments in town right now existing. And the two proposed, this one, there's another one actually in the works too, across town. Uh, just so you have some point of reference. I think for size and massing and all that good stuff. So you have a point of comparison for what's already been built and where it's built in Shrewsbury. I think that's important for the board to consider um, what's been done previously uh, for consistency and any other judgment you might wanna make. Um, the other thing is uh, to Steve Relicus' point. The, well, I'm also gonna ask if uh, the GIS coordinator can help us get the um, distance for the dead, the ones that have dead-end streets. So you can see that too as well, what was done. But that'll just be informational and data for you to look over next month and next meeting. So I'll plan to present that next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And can I add in, wi- with um, locations of, of other over fifty-fives? I would uh, say that this project would be um, in size and scope and um, overall appearance of something similar with Adams Farm. I believe Adams Farm has upwards of eighty units, I think.
They got two entrances.
Yeah, they have two entrances. No, I'm just talking about like the layout and, and the, the, the buildings and the internal drives. They do have, they have two entrances, but then they have another um, long dead end um, with a cul-de-sac at the end of it. That's I think around eleven hundred feet. I don't know if it's Patriot or Independence or um, it, it's kind of on the northern side. They have the, the loop that comes in off of one forty, the other one that goes out to
Gold Street.
Gold Street. And then on the, on the backside of it, like heading towards, we go towards Cherry Street, there is a long, there's a long uh, dead end cul-de-sac down there.
I just, just, you might wanna take a look at it. This is almost twenty years ago. I was involved in the development of an over fifty-five in Milbury, a, a big one. And we, our first unit wasn't till like fifteen hundred feet, you know, uh, for the roadway, but it's a double barrel road. It actually looks pretty nice. Uh, it's kind of an amenity and uh, the butters sorta like uh, walking around the project. So you might wanna look at that. Briarly Pond.
What's the name of it?
Briarly Pond in Milbury.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, we're looking at this project as, as being um, more of an upscale uh, style units, looking at um, higher-end materials. We're, we're looking at this being a kind of a, an upper-end type of a, type of project. So, something like Briarly Pond is something we'd definitely like to look at, cause we wanna have a nice, beautiful entrance coming in and, and have it be something
I'm not saying it was upper end. I'm just saying it was a double barrel.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, we wanna, we wanna have something that's attractive and looks nice.
And before I open up to public comment, um, the one last thing I, I just wanna make sure you're aware of, as far as the waiver for um, fee in lieu of for the inclusionary ha- uh, housing.
Special permit, Mr. Cale.
Special permit, I, my apologies. Um, that I'm less inclined to be in favor of, especially with the size of this project. We're getting further and further behind on our uh, affordable housing inventory in town. So um, that's just my opinion. Again, there are other members on the board that may have others. I just wanted to let you know where, where my thought was on that. All right. This, are you? I thought you were gonna say something.
No, I, I was. I didn't wanna cut you off. Um, one concern that we do have where obviously this is an over fifty-five, providing fifteen percent um, inclusionary would be ten units. It's my understanding that if you have inclusionary units, you can't age restrict those. So we're not sure that it, in this instance where it is an over fifty-five, that it, it would be kind of o- out of character with the type of development where it is over fifty-five and then you're gonna have ten out of the sixty-six non-age restricted. So that's, that's something that we'd like to discuss with the board, cause we're not sure if they, it would really fit in with the, with the character of the development. And um, I mean, numbers-wise, I, I don't know what the
Well, the DHCD won't accept the units
Right.
as part of the housing stock, but we'll accept your money if you wanna give us.
Yeah, and it's, and I think from the numbers, uh, it's, Bernie, tell me, it's like seventy-six thousand per affordable?
I will, we just updated it. You mean for, for the fee in lieu?
For the fee in lieu.
We just updated it for the twenty-twenty numbers. I'll have to look.
I, I'm sure it's gone down.
Oh, yeah. Like everything.
Based on the last numbers with ten units, that's seven, if, and I'm sure it's gone up, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that's
Propose something.
Okay, okay.
Good way to do it is cut down the number of units. Cut down on, you have to pay. So we, just, can you allude to that Bernie a little bit on if it has to be over fifty-five people that purchase them or?
Yeah, that's, I was just thinking that to myself. So DHCD, Department of um, Housing and Community Development, is constantly coming out with new regulations. So I'm actually gonna check with them, I think, about that, exactly what it is. We do have, I can share with the board and upload as well to the website, um, DHCD's guidelines on that, um, that we had from last time we did a project. But again, it was a few years ago. So I wanna make sure nothing's changed. And then also the question about, I can't, I just honestly can't remember right now off the cuff, um, if it was ownership can't be under fifty-five or just a resident. Cause that's a really good question. I just, I just honestly can't remember right now, so.
I know they have a hard time finding qualified buyers in that, in the over fifty-five. Prior, when, when the DHCD did recognize it, I knew they were having a hard time finding qualified buyers.
Under fifty-five buyers and, or just
Over fifty-five buyers.
Over fifty-five looking for affordable.
Okay, and to Steve's point, I think what it is usually people, they'll sell their primary residence to downsize to go into an over fifty-five. And then by the fact that they're selling their other house, the, the, the financial qualifications, it's, it's tough to find people that meet that criteria.
Okay. I just wanted to be on record that I'm, I'm definitely not a fee in payment in lieu of, uh, so I can be convinced otherwise and I say this.
No, I appreciate state regulations. It'll drive uh, wherever the decision needs to be, but this is for all your future projects coming before us, John, okay? I do my best, Steve.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Yes, please stand and come to the microphone. Your name and address, please.
Sir, Roger Wiseman. I'm at one Redwood Lane. I'm at the corner of Redwood and Cypress Ave. Uh, thank you gentlemen for your presentation. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. Major concern I have uh, with this development going in is I have several concerns, uh, but I know a lot of my other neighbors like to speak tonight also. But major concern is actually the traffic. Um, just like Mr. Thomas has said earlier, uh, when these gentlemen gave the presentation, and I understand they did a study. Traffic is really probably one of the main quality life issues we have in this neighborhood. A lot of us uh, before, that lived there before, like my late father-in-law, my mother-in-law, who live also down the road. My mother-in-law also lives there. Um, and um, you know, they had bought this house back in nineteen seventy-eight, built it. First ones lived there, been in this neighborhood a long time. They saw the high school come in, saw the traffic come in. We have this longstanding joke with my neighbors. It's the Shrewsbury five hundred. It starts in September and then sometime mid-June. And we've accepted that and kids are gonna be kids. And um, and the police have been uh, more than accommodating with enforcement, educating, and also getting the kids to slow down. Is it enough? No. Uh, kids are kids, you know. And I have three young children of my own. And I, I kinda get nervous during that certain time. It's two o'clock when it comes down. Even yesterday, I'm out running errands with my mother-in-law. I got into her house on Cypress Ave. We got there around two o'clock. It's like, we're in a holding pattern to get out, because you just can't get out because the traffic's so horrendous. Uh, not to mention, you know, it's a day and age, kids, Snapchat, all this other stuff. And you know, looking at this in another perspective, we're gonna introduce elderly people whose reaction time is way diminished compared to young inexperienced drivers now, right next to each other. So it's a public safety issue in that sense also. Um, with that, uh, I also, I, I know, I questioned, you know, and I had talked to the retired chief, uh, Jay Hester, who was, who was excellent when I brought up this, this concern with him. And he flat-out told me that we are the most complained about road in the entire town. Here we are. We are. We are. All the, all of my neighbors here have complained. And you know, even in the morning when we get out and leave and, and I hate to bring back Mr. Thomas again, but he even mentions getting in that line where you're jockeying for position just to get to the high school. This long line that goes all the way down Cypress Ave, wraps around Gulf Street, um, and people sitting there waiting. You know, and I have to kinda like, all right, I gotta get somewhere. I can't get through the high school, but I wanna get to that side of Worcester, cause I do a lot of my stuff from that side. So, I gotta go and disrupt my neighbors who live on Ivy and the other parts of um, this neighborhood. And so their traffic has increased now also. And just, it's a continuous problem. And now even looking at the town and seeing that, you know, where are these other um, classes are coming up? We know that there's more and more kids in these lower classes. What's it gonna be? Is that gonna be more cars eventually at the high school? You know? I, I just don't think that we can sustain anymore. I understand that they came with this study, um, but for me, one car is, is just too many at this point. So.
Very good.
Thank you for my
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
And I'm not sure if I'm supposed to speak here or maybe at the, my name is Fiana, sorry. I'm Fiana Jatansing. I'm a Realtor. Um, my office is at one ninety-three Turnpike Road in Shrewsbury. I actually live in Worcester. Um, my address is thirty-seven County Street, Worcester. My concern is there's a lot of um, already fifty-five and up communities in Shrewsbury and I know that we do need more housing, but this is a big green area that's gonna be demolished when you build this. And with global, you know, warming and climate change and all that, that's taking out a lot of green space from, from this town. So that, that's just my concern. And I just came back from a trip in Mexico. They did build a nice area where the resort was and they um, put rules in place that they had to keep sixty percent of the forest. So the way that they built it, they didn't take out a lot of trees. So it was very well-built without taking out, you know, all the greenery. So that's just a suggestion. I don't know if I'm in the right place to talk though.
Okay.
You're not in the
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Doug Raddigan. I'm a lawyer at the law firm Abadich and Dewey. And I'm also a Shrewsbury resident. My address is seven Willow Woods Drive. I represent several of the homeowners. I represent several of the homeowners uh with respect to the properties that directly impacted on Gulf Street with respect to this project. It's a little bit regrettable that in the opening meeting, uh my clients felt compelled to have legal counsel here. And and I understand the representations that have been made to this board with respects to changes, but what we have to comment on is the plan that's before us. And if we take a look at, if you if you'd be so kind to uh go to page two, I think that's probably the best representation here. We've heard about the size of the site, but what we're not really talking about here is that what we're looking at is fundamentally a project that's fifty percent larger than the project that was represented uh to my clients back in June. Uh it's grown fif- uh over fifty percent in size, it is certainly a very dense project. It isn't here uh centrally located for any other purpose other than the fact that that the amount of sensitive areas in wetlands that surround this area. Uh this frankly, quite candidly, is a clear cut of of all the developable space on this particular parcel. Now, we are looking at this and 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 what the applicant is encouraging us to do is to look at past projects. What I'd encourage this board to do is to learn from those past projects. We see a lot of those same headaches uh in these plans. We have forty to forty-five foot slopes that are proposed here that slope into sensitive areas. This project, we have a septic system that we're just moving without perking the land, without being able to actually substantively answer the questions as to whether this is going to be an elevated system. We haven't even addressed the my bigger concern, which is the floodplain here. This is gonna be a significant amount of runoff that's gonna be caused by clearcutting this area. This is in an area that requires a floodplain study because this is going to go directly under two ninety and impact an area that is already uh chronically overflooded based upon uh the current use and overflow. That's not even thought of here. What we want to do is hurry up and get a plan approved, and we'll move septics, and we'll do things, and we're gonna make adjustments on the fly that aren't thought out and aren't addressed in these plans. You've heard about safety, you've heard about turnaround streets, you you look at the houses that or the units that are planned closest to to my client's residence. Uh I, you're you're right, Mr. Ritalakis, there's absolutely no way emergency vehicles can turn around in that particular area. And although there's been representations made that we're gonna change this plan, those same representations have been made on prior occasions. And instead, what we have here and what's been presented to this board is a plan that's fifty percent larger than a plan that we looked at in June that took away the buffer that was discussed and has eradicated it, I guess we'll see it in a later version. And we haven't even addressed any of the other issues. We we don't want sidewalks, but we want a clubhouse. Uh you know, this is simply too many units for a site that is ill-fitted for a project of this magnitude. And I'll I'll wait and and I'll 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 wait for the the revised plans, but this is, this is too much for us to even uh narrow down to just traffic. This is something that's gonna be impactful to all these homes, it's gonna be impactful uh to the community at large. Thank you.
Thanks. Just for the record, um as far as any prior plans that you residents may have had uh information on, none of those plans were communicated through the board. This is the first set of plans that we, I'm not looking to to get any, I'm just saying, this is the first set of plans that were brought forward to this board.
Yeah. Understood, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just a clarification. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Yes, yeah, you can be next.
Okay.
To Sesame, eleven Cypress Ave, I'm one of the houses that the road driveway will apply. The drive, the way that driveway goes, haven't lived there, it's going right along the back of the homes. And on the other side, it's wetland. Anyone who's lived there knows, um you could come this time of year, there's wetland on on both sides. We've had ducks who come and nest there, there's so much water back there. So I don't know where that driveway is necessarily in the best place. And we do use our yards, it may slope down to that road, but I do have plant, a lot of plantings and you know, you can't just say, well, the their yards slope down, they're not important. I really don't, looking forward to having a driveway right up on the back of my property.
Understood. Um I I believe conservation will address the concerns relative to the wetlands. Thank you. Um yes.
Hey there, Chris Johnson, eighty-seven Sewell Street. Uh I do also agree on the concerns of the green space for our neighborhood. I didn't see anything, you know, representing any sort of uh renewable energy in the project, but that's actually not my primary concern. Uh I don't know if there's been any study made or concern for the noise coming off of two ninety, both affecting the residents that would be in the proposed development, but also the residents of the neighborhood directly adjacent to it and the school that sits at the top of the hill. So they're they're in in and above the, yes, the traffic as well, of course, that impacts me on Sewell Street to some extent. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Is there an, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Paul Statch, I live at twenty-nine Cypress Ave. And for the comment about the forty miles an hour, you must not live around here or driven the roads, that's pretty typical speed limit in neighborhoods. Um and your your uh traffic study, you talk about Greenbrier and Cypress. You don't talk about Gulf, and I don't know if you've driven down Gulf and that road is a mess. The same with um Oilston Circle where Gulf lets out, that place is a mess. And we have the kids and the adults who drive the kids to school who speed up and down, like you said, the raceway. We've uh, we lived here before the high school was built and it was a nice neighborhood because we had eh two entrances in, but no out at the top. So the only reason people would go there is because they lived there, so it was really nice. And then to develop this, I assume you're gonna, you're gonna grade down, make a flat spot, then it grades down again. So there's probably gonna be blasting from the experience with the high school, all the ledge that's in this area. And so are you gonna take the liability for the property damage of the houses around? Because it's a lot closer to the houses than the high school was. And that's, that's about it. Thank you.
Did I, no, no. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Marcia Statch, I live at twenty-nine Cypress Avenue. Quick question as far as the one-way in and the one-way out. One of the reasons we fought for the high school to have the entrance closed at the top was because of the traffic. But we were told that there were no cul-de-sacs, that that cul-de-sac at the the uh dead end had to be open for fire um purposes. So with the one-way in and the one-way out with this subdivision, I do hope that they do make a um a suggestion as far as making sure that that is another um exit, but making sure that the exit, if this does take place, which, if this does take place, that that exit is somewhere else, that it does not affect and add more traffic to Cypress to Cypress and to um Gulf. Speaking of Gulf, speaking of Sewell, speaking of all the surrounding towns, you've taken a traffic study. Have you taken a traffic study during school? Have you taken a traffic study during the winter? Have you taken a traffic study when people are crap driving down Gulf Street and you're trying to pass a bus? Is there an environmental study going to happen? And you spoke about conservation, is there something gonna happen with that as well? If it's a private subdivision, does that mean that the neighbors will not be able to take advantage of the walking trails that you'll have in that subdivision since you're taking away our backyard?
I don't know, Mr. Gruney, if you, I I'm I'm gonna take a stab at that one. Um I I understand that the wooded area has has probably been somewhat used by the neighbors that are in there, but somebody does own that land, so when, you know, people have the right to to do things on their land as needed. So I understand your position on it, but it's it's somebody else's land at the same time, okay?
What was the traffic study, I guess?
So.
I didn't see the traffic study, do we have?
There is a traffic study, and I was just gonna speak to that, Mr. Chairman, for a second, is that the planning board does send out the applicant's traffic study to a peer review traffic study, so that hasn't taken place yet. Um I've only just gotten the scope from the traffic peer reviewer like two days ago. So they will have it and it will be uploaded to the website, and if you can't find it, just give me a call or an email and I will send it on to you. Um I was gonna say something else, but I think I've forgotten. Um conservation, that's what I was gonna say. Um Mr. Gruney can correct me if I'm wrong, but the next conservation meeting, I believe, is March fifteenth.
Yes.
The Tuesday, so.
That's right.
Uh not next Tuesday, the Tuesday after. So issues of wetland, wildlife, those types of things uh would be with conservation, so you can get in touch with them and um either send them comments ahead of time or do what you're doing tonight and show up and express your comments at that time, so. Um that's all, just wanted to share that information.
Very good. Ma'am, did you want to have a question?
Hi, Rachel Missile, twenty-three Cypress Avenue. Um so this is going to go in directly behind my house. I believe that there is some conservation land back there and, or at least there was when I first moved in. I don't know if that has changed over the past eighteen, almost nineteen years. Um so I don't know what the the buffer there is. I know that for some of my neighbors, there is no buffer. I'm a little farther up on Cypress, so um but anyway, uh sir, you mentioned zipping up Cypress Avenue at seven fifteen, you're not zipping. I live on Cypress Avenue on the days when we have no sidewalks and I have to drive my son to the high school. It is fifteen minutes to go half a mile. So just putting that out there, this traffic study may be saying that we're only adding fourteen cars on Cypress. The cars that are coming in are going up Ridge, they're going up Ivy Path in an attempt to zoom up to get up to the top of the high school and cut into the traffic. This has been an increasing problem over the years. Um this isn't going to help. I know that this land is owned by somebody and that it will get developed. My concern is that we do it in the least impactful way to the wildlife, to the residents. Also, I'm very concerned about runoff. There are other houses in the neighborhood where the runoff is so severe that they get ice slicks, you cannot walk. Um it's, there's a house at the bottom of, somebody help me, the bottom of Ivy and.
Ridge.
Oh, Ridge.
Drive.
Yeah. It's absolutely impossible, it's a, it's either a swamp or an ice slick. Um so there are some serious issues with water and given how mu- how much of that area is wetlands, you're talking about how few um uh condos you're gonna build in that space. Well, I think that a lot of that is because you don't have a lot of bu- buildable space because a lot of it is wetlands. So I'm really concerned about the runoff that's gonna be created. I do want to make sure that everybody is paying attention to that so that we don't have houses that are waterlogged at the bottom of the hill because that is not fair to the abutters. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more, but that's all I've got to say for tonight.
Very good, thank you.
Where do you think the conservation land is?
Um.
What's the location of the conservation land?
So when, I think it's.
I can tell.
It's directly behind my house.
Right, I think, right, we, I live at twenty-nine and there's a another stunt road there. And the land behind there, all the way down to Redwood, eleven acres is the town. The guy either gave it to you or you bought it very cheap.
It's all, it's all here and also to the south of us.
Okay, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is George Germanos, I live at six Redwood Lane. So for me, I'm probably the closest abutter to the development other than the gentleman on Gulf Street. Um if you look at it, the 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 road actually goes right onto my property. So for me, I have a lot of concerns. I have noise concerns, I have light concerns. I also do have noise concerns because of vegetation that's going to be removed, and we probably get a lot of noise from two ninety. You're gonna take all that vegeta- vegetation out, obviously that's gonna increase that that noise profile. I also have severe concerns, I am the closest one to the clubhouse, I'm the closest one to the septic system. I have a septic system. And I have great concerns with the water flow, I've been there for a long time, I know how the neighborhood was before the high school went in, and I know how it was after. Those roads were pristine, there were no cracks. When that fracking occurred, that changed the water table. We saw water come in, streets crack, this is just another iteration of that. And I have severe concerns, I do have septic myself. But it's, and the road, I mean, lighting wise, yeah, there's a dip. But for me, if there are lighting, it's gonna be, I'm a single-family house, that lighting is gonna be directly at my level where the house is. My privacy on the side is gonna be interesting. Access is gonna be interesting because if there isn't a sidewalk there, I mean, people are gonna walk their dogs, it's just natural. How are they gonna get to the road? I don't want them coming through my property. There is the abutting land, but it's still landlocked between houses. So I have a lot of concerns because I don't really have enough information here. Um but, yeah, it's a, there's a lot of questions, right? I think we all understand that. Uh but I don't know what the mitigation, mitigating strategies, and I understand this is development, this is their, his property. And I I'm not gonna, you know, it is what it is. But I do have concerns even with the development there, I have a lot of very large trees that are literally right on the wall line. I have two pine trees that are over sixty-five feet tall. If that soil gets disturbed and that root system gets disturbed, what do I do with those things? And I have at least three trees of that size in that area. Um, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of questions. And um so we'd like to really understand better these plans. And again, I think that you haven't seen the plans, but these plans have been socialized to us as plans. So they've approached us and said, hey, this is what it's going to be, and now it's something else altogether. So from a trust perspective or just from a transparency perspective, we have a lot of questions, all right?
Understand.
And even with the traffic, I mean, impact of the neighborhood, again, I've been here a long time. That road originally was supposed to be gated, it was supposed to be closed to limit the impact to the neighborhood. It was decided because of safety reasons that, you know, they would open the gate because, you know, the school board, it went past the building and you ended up being a a a safety issue to the school board. And the school board said, look, we need to give them two-way access, so we're gonna open up this this area. That was hugely impacted to the entire neighborhood, and that's not just us up to Cypress. Because like the gentleman said, you could walk your dog around the whole entire neighborhood, you would see no one because essentially the whole section of Shrewsbury was almost a dead-end section between Gulf. And also with traffic, if you look at it now, look at the developments that have gone in on Gulf. I mean, large development, large development, large development, that's been additional traffic. And anybody knows coming down Gulf, you take that blind curve right there, bright time of day, it's it's very, it was very dangerous when there wasn't the traffic there. It's, you know, it's, it's beyond dangerous at this point. And yeah, we have concerns because, I mean, I'm over fifty-five, don't get me wrong. But there's, 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 there's some, you know, reality there. Uh who's gonna be using that road, how are they gonna be using it, when are they gonna be using it? Um, yeah, a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just for for clarity, um the the scope of the project as it was prior and what Steve was looking at before, the amount of land associated with the project was seventeen acres less. And so um with the addition of the the southeastern portion of of seventeen acres, it did change the scope of the project. So just to be clear, there was no smoke and mirrors changing, it was, there was a another seventeen acres that were added to the project and that changed the scope of the project. And and I'd also like to reiterate, um in terms of of screening and lighting, um the the gentleman's home that's at six Redwood, he's, grade-wise, he's, um his grade is about ten feet higher than where the. than where the driveway goes behind him on my project. But with that said, we want to make sure that we can work with the neighbors for screening and trying to make sure that we're good neighbors. So if, you know, I can give you my number, and we can talk with Steve, and we'd like to make sure that we are cognizant that if there is some screening or some other items that we can work with the abutters, we're amenable to do that.
This board is very much in favor of cost communication with your neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Just had one more question. Is there a setback with the road? So just like there's a setback for frontage and things, is there a setback at all, or can it be put right on the property line?
Mr. Cahill.
There are no setbacks.
So it can be literally put right on my property line? And, okay, so...because I do have a stone wall there. We all have...there's a stone wall, and so any...just right, right there.
Yeah, so we're going to have...this is...we're going to have the geotechnical peer review take a look at all these slopes.
Yeah.
Precisely for that concern about stability, about integrity of all of those, so there's no slipping away of the slope, et cetera, et cetera. But, yeah, there's no setbacks in town for driveways.
Okay. And with this being in a floodplain, that's taken into consideration as well?
For setbacks?
For the road, where the road is. The road is a floodplain.
Right. So I can't speak to that. We do have also a peer reviewer who graves engineering, who's looked at all the stormwater issues, so we will have a report for you on that as well.
Well, the reason I know is because I had to get my land resurveyed because I had a...when I went to reapply for a mortgage, I had to get...they told me I needed to get flood insurance. So I had to go to FEMA. I had to go then have the reserver the line because where it was showing, I was in a floodplain. But they didn't take into effect that when they built my house, they elevated up. Like, it's elevated a bit. So I was able to get an exception written from FEMA saying, well, you know, it's okay, you're no longer in the floodplain.
Yeah, so I would bring that concern to conservation and our conservation agent, Brad Stone.
Yeah.
Who's essentially my role on conservation, and that's again on the fifteenth, so I would bring it to him.
Okay.
And ask those questions about floodplains to him.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you were to go ahead and plan this, how long would the construction last?
John?
That's always a good question. A lot of that is market-driven. If there's a lot of demand, construction goes faster. But judging from other projects we've been involved in, I mean, it could be a five-year process.
Thank you. Thank you. Was there someone else that had...okay. We are getting long in the evening. Just so you know, this is the first meeting. There will be more meetings to have other questions or concerns brought up, so please.
My name's Krista Dupree, fourteen Candlewood Way. Obviously, I'm not directly in this particular neighborhood, but being a dead-end street myself, I kind of feel I am part of this neighborhood. I can definitely share, especially for the last few speakers, of this high school traffic because I absolutely do come around from a dead-end street onto Sewell, never onto Gulf because I would never get up Cypress. So I do have to come up one of those side streets. And if I leave my house on Candlewood Way past seven fifteen, my son will be late for school. That's how long it takes to get in that traffic. The other point of the high school traffic hill is people actually come off of the main street exit and use the high school driveway since it's not an official road, and they use that to then cut over to the other side into town instead of going fully around Holden Street onto Sewell and then over onto Greenbrier. So that's also another point of reference, that people actually do use it as a cut-through road. Sorry, I lost my notes here. My concern, especially it wasn't clarified, at least for tonight, but I'm sure in the future, is actually the water pressure and how that would affect, especially the residents as well if we're tapped into as well, what potential changes could be in the future down the road, as well as the runoff, as well as I'm on a dead-end street. We do have a very large cul-de-sac. Yes, it gets cloud, but the snow removal is tough. I can't imagine how the snow is going to be done. The last thing I would really like to see on the plans is how far, which I'm sure is there, but very specifically, how far this project fully goes up and where it starts kind of the beginning or where the bar is to the high school. So how far does it extend all the way up the hill and potentially going close to the high school parking lot? That's what I'm trying to visually understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the proximity to the high school, it's...there is another town-owned parcel that is to the south of us, heading towards the high school. So there's a large town-owned parcel that separates us from the south of Redwood Lane, paralleling Cypress. There's a large open space that the town owns between Cypress and this property. And then on the south side of this property, there's another large swath of land that the town owns. So we're not anywhere near getting up that far up Cypress to be near the high school.
Thank you.
Gene Budenhagen, I'm two oh-one Gulf Street. I'm the largest abutter. I wonder if you could bring up sheet fifteen. To give you a little background, I've been working with this developer since last June. He's approached me because I'm the largest abutter to the property on the other side, approximately one thousand feet of my property abuts this project. And basically, he had another engineering company at that time, and what we were trying to do is work out a buffer area between my property and his buildings that were going in. The first thing was, he had the septic tank that you can see at the top. It's basically right up against my property, adjacent to my family room. Now, basically, I've asked for an abuffer and some type of earth and berm, trees, et cetera, et cetera, to come right along my property and block off that development because that development's going to be up in the air. All the drainage is going to have to come down onto my property when they're done with it. So right up as of today, he's indicated he will give me a buffer. I have not seen the latest drawings, so I don't know exactly what they look like. At the present time, we have from twenty-six feet as far as the buffer goes at one end of the property up to about a hundred. Now, he tells me in the latest email I got this afternoon, he's going to increase that to a hundred and forty feet. He's going to remove the septic and relocate it. I know it's his land. He can do what he wants with it, but I just feel that's very important, that I get that buffer right along that whole property line. And that's my main concern going forward with this, and that I get it in writing or on the drawings, and there's a no-cut, no-tree cutting there because that's all beautiful oaks and maples all the way along there. Now, just adjacent to where you see that septic and those houses are sitting there, you're into a swamp area. And that's just one swamp of a series of them that falls down going over towards Cypress on it. So I've been working with them. If I can get the buffers, earth and berm, some trees, some blockage, I'm happy.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We have...we...have you been doing that, John?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any drawings of that or...not...obviously not yet.
Not yet. And actually, Steve, I believe we did a plan that would modify some of the locations of the units, shift over the septic. And I believe the plan that Steve sent over to Mr. Budenhagen had, in the proximity of his house, if you're looking, his house is up at the top corner, as you see on the screen.
Yep.
So adjacent to his house, I think we had an uncut swath about eighty feet off the property line. We got rid of the septic, and we moved that. See the top unit on the left at the top of the screen? We moved it on the other side of that. So...but then heading, as you head south, we are closer, I think, in the area of the next unit down. I think we were down to, I think it was forty feet, a forty-foot uncut swath. So...but right adjacent to his house, we're in excess of eighty feet, and I think the closest from his house to our unit was a hundred and...
A hundred and four.
A hundred and...what was it?
Hundred and forty feet.
About a hundred and forty feet. Yeah. So...
And that will be marked before you do cut if and when this happens?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. No, we...again, the scope changed because we...there was an increase of acreage, but we do want to...we do want to work with the neighbors, and we want to let that be known.
Mr. Chairman, this is just something I've learned over the years. I've never said it, but I'm going to say it tonight, just from our recent projects, is that there's a lot of talk this evening about having talks with the applicants from abutters, which is totally fine, totally legal. They can talk to the applicant all they like. But if it's not on the plan that the planning board sees, it doesn't exist legally, right? There's no way for us to enforce it, and by us, I mean me, because I'm the one who goes out there with engineering and we enforce it. If it's not on this plan, if it's on a napkin, if you have a handshake, it doesn't mean anything to us. It has to be on this plan, or it doesn't...well, say it doesn't count. There's no way for us to enforce it. So...and I'm not trying to like point fingers or pass judgment on anyone. It's just the way it's been in the past, that there's always this misunder...not always...lots of times, a misunderstanding about, well, I spoke to this developer across town, and he said, I'm going to have this ditch, or I'm going to have this tree, and it doesn't show up on the plan, and then low and behold, the projects get built, and then there's, you know, people are up in arms because the tree wasn't there. So I just...just fair warning and just make sure...excuse me, it's getting late and I haven't enough to drink. It's just fair warning that just make sure it's on the plan, and if you need to come and talk to me, and I can help, you know, mediate something. But if it's an agreement outside, we can't enforce that. Private agreements are just that. So...and again, not saying about anyone...anything about anyone, but this does come up repeatedly. So just make sure it's on the plan, whatever it is that you've worked out. So that's perfectly fine. Whatever you work out, that's, you know, that's fine with us. So...
Can I do one follow-up?
Yeah. Be brief, please.
I'm going to be brief. Basically, what I'm concerned about too is, as you know, there's a second parcel of land here. So there's another developer involved with this developer, which should really be brought out and discussed. We're not talking with one developer here. We're talking with more than one. Okay? So I think that should be brought out right up front, who the developer is, because he has been working in this town for a while. So the land in the back there is owned by the Andersons, and now they're acquiring a portion of it to continue the size and increase the size of this development. So we're not working with just one.
I understand, but we can only deal with the developments in front of us, just so you know.
I understand, but I think that should have been explained in the beginning.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Possible, I'd like to kind of wrap this one up for tonight, and we'll get into it again next month. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one comment. There will not be another notice sent to you for the next meeting? So just look on the planning...it's April seventh, I believe?
April seventh.
April seventh is the next meeting?
John, are you going to be in a position to accomplish these changes by April seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
So you will not get another notice from here on in? So our next meeting's April seventh.
Thank you.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the Greenbrier over fifty-five housing site plan approval and special permit until Thursday, April seventh at seven P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And please, as you leave this evening, if you could keep your conversations really, really low. I'm sure you probably were sitting here when the last group left and that noise spilled. We still have a few items that we have to get through here, so I appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item of business is I have a bond for thirty-four to thirty-six Harrington Avenue. Bond is the amount of two thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Mr. Cahill, questions or discussion?
This was the mixed-use development across from the entrance to Lake Way that was approved a month or two months ago now, I can't remember, for the fourteen units in the apartment and that one thousand square feet of commercial retail right on Harrington. So that's what this bond is for.
Okay. You have a motion?
I move that we accept the bond as proposed for the thirty-four through thirty-six Harrington Ave.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item of business, we have some proposed public way acceptance for annual town meeting, which is going to be happening in May.
Yes, we received a memo from Mr. Truman, yours truly, this morning regarding Commerce Drive and Lake Street. This is the Lake Street realignment, and do you want to speak to Commerce?
Yes, Commerce Drive has been a subdivision that's been out there for a while. The applicants did actually start the process last year, but we were almost ready to push it forward and then realized there was an order of conditions on the project that had never been closed out. So we held it off, so this year it's ready that the order of conditions has been closed out. So that one is substantially complete already, that one. The Lake Street realignment is basically the portion in front of the New Beale School. We, if you recall, we did some changes to take out some of the vertical and horizontal changes. So the town manager's asked us to get that done. So those are the two right now. We may have a couple more in fall town meeting, but these are the two that we're recommending right now.
So this waiver...sorry, waiver, oh, my gosh. Way too late. This motion would be to recommend to the Board of Selectmen laying out these two roads. It will come back to us for a recommendation to town meeting at a later date, but for now, the next step in the process is to go to Selectmen. So the recommendation to lay out this road based on engineering's review and your approval.
Okay. I move that we recommend to the Selectmen the layout of both Commerce Drive and the new Lake Street realignment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the only other item I wanted to mention was that we did also receive a letter from Mr. Truman regarding the as-built plans for two fifty-seven Main Street, the common driveway, and it was okayed by engineering as complete and completed according to the plan. So I just, for the public record and correspondence with you...
Okay. There's nothing that we need to do with this, just informational...
No, I just want to make it public, and it's part of the condition to bring it up to your attention, so there you are.
Thank you. All right. With that, I don't see anything else on our agenda. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.